On January 23rd, 2018, I'd like to call the meeting of the College Place City Council to order. Mr. Cleveland, would you please say our evening prayer and our Pledge of Allegiance?
We ask that you watch over our city, guide us in making positive decisions, and we pray that you bring good cheer to decision-making into all the lives of our citizens.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now our time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing none, we have before us a consent agenda, approving this evening's agenda, approving council minutes from January 9th, approving the salary ordinance, and approving the excused absence of Ms. Selby and Ms. Nyhagen.
Looked to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Action items before us this evening, Mr. Hartwig. Excuse me, let me, I always forget, let me dial here. I should state, Mr. Bobbitt is meeting with us on the telephone. Perhaps?
The mailbox is full and cannot accept any messages at this time. Goodbye.
I was just going to suggest that we leave the entire council meeting.
No, that was it. So, let's press ahead. Mr. Hartwig, the CNG station relocation.
So, again, I brought this to you last week as a workshop. Cascade Natural Gas is wanting to relocate their facility there on Selby Culpey Street to the end of Larch, next to the highway. We have excess property there, and they would like to, they've placed the large main down. The problem with the main station where it is, is it's not large enough. And so, they've extended a larger main down the highway right away, and if they can get this station in place, they can tie right into a larger main that will feed this whole city and the area west of us. So, it'll be an improvement for our citizens as well. It's a trade that we can, we would use their property up there once the trade was done, that their station be removed, then we could, they'd give us $1,500 to make some improvements in there, which we'd like to just make it a little park-like setting for people that are walking or riding their bikes, they could stop there and sit and just enjoy the scenery because they've got a nice view of the mountains there. As well, they'll, like I said, they'll remove their station, they'll screen with a fence, slatted fence, the station that they were putting in there. And so, I hadn't heard any questions, so I'm thinking it might be favorable, and they're favorable, they've run it up their chain, so they're ready to go on business flow.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig. Mr. Peterson.
I'd move to approve the proposed agreement between the city and the Cascade Natural Gas regarding the relocation of the CNG regulating station and the trading of property between CNG and the city.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Ms. Kilgore, document locator software.
So, this is software that I believe Mike brought forward to you for the first time last meeting. I was absent, so I guess he presented in my stead. There's a couple of components to this software. The reason that we're looking to implement something like this right now is to improve our efficiency in routing paperwork throughout the city. It takes us longer than it should to shuffle paper between departments in multiple buildings and multiple locations, and we'd like to speed up our payables process as well as just general approvals of documents, contracts, et cetera. So, this is an electronic, or basically a digital solution where we would be scanning documents in, and they would be being routed electronically. You'd basically receive an email when your approval is needed for something, click in on a link, take you directly to the document, you can look at it electronically, approve it, and send it back. So, it's super quick, and this is also, it brings other efficiencies to the accounts payable process as well. One thing that it does is there's like a scanning component that when we receive an invoice, whether it's digital already or we are actually scanning it in, as it's, the software actually scans the invoice and picks out particular information off of it and self-fills the payables screen. So, it eliminates a lot of manual work in our office, which is great because we're always looking for ways to figure out how to have our staff time go further. So, that's kind of the accounts payable side. The other side of this is a forms package where you can basically create whatever kinds of custom forms you want, and they can be linked up to our website so the public has access to them. This, Mike is really excited about the possibility of using this for building permits and expediting that process for our economic development side of things. It can also be used for people to fill out records request forms, or, I mean, you name it, we can create it and put it up there and they can use it, and then it just basically dumps all the data into a database and it's easily used. So, this software package has been, they actually have quite a few cities around the country that use it. They're based out of Portland, so customer service is really close by. And I know Whitman College uses it, and with good results. The budget, this was not budgeted this year. We were waiting for bids from some other companies and time just got away, and it was basically overlooked at the end of the year to put it in. So, there isn't a dedicated budget for this. However, if you saw in your packet, I did, a budget allocation of how the cost would be spread, and it would be spread between, I think, four different funds. So, the impact to each fund is pretty minimal. And, see what else do I want to tell you? Oh, the other thing I wanted to let you know is that tonight, the agenda item you reviewed last week only had the pricing for the accounts payable solution in it. Mike asked me to actually bring back both the forms and the document locator to you tonight. So, the price is more on here than what it was last week, I just want to make sure you're aware of that. The maximum that it would be is $22,840, and that is at calculating their professional services at the maximum end of the budget that they gave us. They actually don't think it will take that long for implementation, they think that they'll be able to get by with 20 or 30 percent fewer hours than they budgeted here for us, but this is just to be on the safe side. So, we're asking tonight if you guys are comfortable with approving the purchase so we can get going on implementation.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore, Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Dickerson.
I think I asked Mike last time, when they presented this, does this happen, I believe it's called OCR, did this has that correct, object character recognition?
It does.
And so, wow, that's okay.
Yeah.
So, you can scan on a phrase or a name, and you don't have to know what the check number is or the invoice number, you can just go and hunt it down. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's, once you start using it and building up the data that you've got stored in it, which by the way, we're asking for cloud hosting so that it's not stored on our servers and not using up our space. But once you start using it, it's very, it actually has a lot of really good search functions. I mean, you can search on basically anything and it'll pull up a list of.
And then the last really quick question, the original document cannot be changed, you can edit it to put notes and okay it, or attach notes, but it's locked down, correct, as far as invoices, and, but did they talk about that?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, I think you can put, you can put notes, like stamped notes on there, typed notes on there. You can put initials or approvals or whatever, but you can't actually alter the document once it's.
Right, okay.
Digitized.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dickerson.
I trust that we've provided with you with enough revenue this year to, you have the cost of these. I'm all in favor of being progressive with our processes, and I think it's, it's a good idea for us to move in that direction. Technology is changing so fast, and some of these things may take a few months or so to kind of play catch-up, you know, but in the long run, you know, this is really going to be a benefit, I think. So, I'm all in favor of this.
Mr. Cleveland.
This might be a hard number to come up with, but in the idea of like the time savings to the staff, and you mentioned there's a lot of shuffling between papers and now.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at shortening our timeframe from when we receive an invoice to actually the payment getting to the vendor by like 10 days. So, and part of it is by using this software to speed up our processes, get the routing done. The routing is what takes the longest. Honestly, it takes days to get something around the city. So, if we can cut that back, it enables us to allow, or to offer incentives to our vendors to sign up for electronic payment, which is basically instantaneous, instead of mailing a check, dealing with the paper and the postage and all that. So, it's really going to save a lot of time.
Sounds like you're hard to quantify though.
Yeah, I mean, we won't be able to really do that until we get it implemented, but the last place I worked before here, when I was at a hospital, we implemented the same sort of system, and it went over really well. It really helped, so.
Other questions for Ms. Kilgore.
I'll make a motion to adopt our staff to accept quote number 12213 with document locator for the accounts payable solution, perfect forms, qualified training and professional services, and an amount not to exceed $22,840.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. Chief Demarest, marijuana code.
Good evening. So, the current cannabis ordinance is outdated and confusing, the proposed language is consistent with the State of Washington Code of Ordinances and provides clear language based on the 2015 Cannabis Patient Protection Act. The city ordinance acknowledges the RCW enforcement of the nuisance codes and city zoning ordinance. And one of the big things in the old ordinance is it, I mean, it's asking for things like written official documentation from the US DOJ and the Drug Enforcement Administration, certifying the cannabis application, it's asking for written verification of city planning, it's asking for permits, so it's just old, you're not going to get approval from DOJ to grow marijuana, so. This is a medical cannabis ordinance, and it's consistent with the city code of ordinances, and it applies new best practices.
Questions for the chief. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion again. I'm going to go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-002 repealing and replacing College Place Municipal Code 5.08 for medical cannabis.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion?
This is ran through by council?
Yes.
Okay, I would just, yeah, I just, yeah, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Once again, Chief Demarest.
I'm.
Repeal and replacement of 6.04.086 service animals to the College Place Municipal Code.
Oh, we're getting general penalties first, can you?
Nope, I missed that. Let's, let's do general penalties first.
So, Chapter 1.20 General Penalties, while updating our criminal ordinance, it was revealed the existing general penalty section of our Chapter 1 was left blank, reserved without language. The following language is consistent with general penalties associated with violations of the city ordinance and their definitions of infraction, misdemeanor, and gross misdemeanor.
Questions for the chief.
Mr. Peterson. Quickly, a question, I, yeah, I apologize, I didn't look through all the documents. There are no, were there dollar amounts assigned to these infractions that were changed, or?
Now, just.
Or my?
Yeah, go ahead. There is a bail schedule that's been approved by city council, we have that. What this does is for infractions, it sets a not more than $500 infraction, and then defines gross misdemeanor mayor and misdemeanor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet.
Any further questions for the chief? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 18-003 for general penalties of violating city ordinance.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion for the chief? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now repeal and replace of 6.04.086 service animals to the College Place Municipal Code.
Yes, sir. So, the replacement of the service animals was, it was brought to my attention actually from the university because students could basically migrate any animal they wanted to into the university. So, it was brought to my attention, we did a little research, and we found out that we were not in compliance with the current American Citizens Act, which allows dogs and/or miniature horses to be allowed as service animals. Now, the miniature horses does come with some additional reasonableness, and that is outlined as well in the ordinance, talks about the poundage that they can be and the height they can be, and some other requirements, you have to be potty trained and whatnot. So, I mean, it sounds kind of silly, but it's a thing, so we included that as well.
Questions for Chief Demarest? What can you say?
And I appreciate your help with this, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Yeah, I pointed out that miniature horses were allowed under the Americans with Disabilities. You had a question?
No, I was just going to move to adopt ordinance number 18004 repealing and replacing College Place Municipal Code 6.04.086 in order to be compliant with state and federal law.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You're still at bat, Chief.
I am.
Security cameras.
I am the proxy for Mr. Rizetel, he's away, and he's asked me to bring forward the purchase approval for the I-4 pod security camera, which has been budgeted and approved in our budget package, but it does exceed his spending authority, so he is asking for permission to purchase a I-4 pod security camera to be installed at Kowans Park. The security camera will record video on a loop and re-record overall footage, the video will only be pulled in the event of a crime or incident that needs to be investigated.
Mr. Cleveland.
How much of, I guess, the data buffer do we have here? Like, how long, what's the video loop length? Is this something that'll be good for like a day, for a week?
Well, I'm ashamed, it's three days.
Three days, okay. So, we don't catch it before the three days.
Yeah, and I, and my guess is we can change that, but when the, we were given a WebEx briefing now, they, they gentleman said three days. We can check with other cities, and that seems to be a reasonable time period. So, this, this particular security camera was adopted by several other cities, including the city of Kent, several cities in California, but there's several cities in Washington that have adopted it and felt that it was a good camera, so.
Is the recording then of the maximum capacity of the camera, 1080p?
It is high definition, you can zoom in on the footage.
Okay, so we're not doing like this, like 1000 pixels kind of stuff?
It's pretty impressive in the way it's designed, it's designed to be a visual deterrent as well. You can get the option of the blue light, and you can keep it on all the time so that people actually see it right away, you can have the option of not have it on there, but you know, we had some vandalism done at the new park. We are hoping that if this works well, that we can also have it down at Lyons Park and other areas around the city that, you know, so kids have been at this brand new playground so parents can allow their kids to go play, it gives a sense of security. If there is vandalism that's going on, we have an opportunity to figure out who those people are, so. I think it's good, it's, it's an investment, financial investment, but in the long run, I think it'll pay for itself.
I have a motion to approve purchase of the I-4 POD security camera for Kowans Park.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Mr. Dickerson. Any further questions for Chief Demarest? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief. Mr. Gordon, Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer Plan Update Request for Proposals.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a presentation. Appreciate it. This is going to be real brief. We're just looking for council approval to go out for request proposals for an update to what we are calling our Southwest Sewer Study. This was initially prepared back in 2005 by Anderson Perry, and if you, this is College Avenue, this is Long Johnia, Tamperdy this way, and this is a new area that was just brought into the city, the McCarron and the Christiansen Properties. And so, we have a, a study on, right now, that kind of tells us what elevations are, what proposed routes are going to be, but we anticipate now that this area's been annexed that we're going to see some developed interest in it, and we want to get out ahead of the wall and make sure we know where we really want to put those mains in the long run, because we're also anticipating that at some point, it's just a zoning map, that was in your packet, at some point, these areas here, which we just annexed, are going to eventually, over the years, expand down to the south. So, it's pretty important that we figure out elevations now where we're going to put our lift stations and do some prior front planning. So, that's what this is about, just really asking for, asking for your approval to go out for a request for proposals. We'll come back to you with whatever we get from the different consultants who respond. Part of our request will be some survey work to establish elevations, again, water only flows downhill, sewage, wastewater's very similar, so you've got to know where it's going to go. So, anyway, that's pretty much it, just a brief request, if it's okay for us to go out and at least pursue proposals.
Good idea. Mr. Dickerson.
I move that we approve the advertising Southwest Area Sanitary Sewer Plan Update Request for Proposals.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further questions? Oh, you're not off, for Mr. Gordon. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Ricard, final plot of Homestead Village Public Utility District Phase 3C.
It's a planned unit development, actually. And, so this is part of the.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Well, you know, these acronyms, we got to get them correct.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, this is Phase 3C, it's a 19 lot phase of the overall 321 lot subdivision of the Homestead Development. It's this lower southwest corner of the upper portion of the bluff. They're under construction right now, installing, I think the water sewers installed, I don't know if it's been inspected, but, or it's been inspected, it's passed, tested, but it's a fairly straightforward phase, there's no open spaces in this phase. They were required to install the secondary emergency local access to the bluff beyond the road that we have going up to right now, which is Homestead, so the second emergency access point now is you go up Sixth, Sixth Street to Centrus Terrace, and then you cross an easement, across this lot, Homestead Hayden Homes acquired an easement, and it gets you up there, there's some gravel roads for that.
Mr. Dickerson.
I see the yellow lines back behind Southwest Virginia Street, is it? Are there actually only 19 lots in there?
Yeah, there will be 19 lots in this, in this phase here.
Oh, this phase, okay, so it's not that area, it's under the Virginia Street, it's up above it.
Yeah, the plot is, should be in your packet.
So, is that, is that area under development that I was just referring to?
Yeah, that, all about, there's 71 acres that Hayden Homes is developing, so here's the, the final plot.
Yeah.
Right here, we're just, just south of Virginia, like you pointed out, and the Homestead goes down. The rest of the property, I don't know what the acreages are, but there is more development at Hayden Homes is developing.
Ms. Sherman, and then Mr. Peterson.
These are city streets, yes, not private roads?
Correct, they are city streets.
This will exit onto Whitman?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there was a contribution that's required for the signal at College and Whitman, that all for over the entire 321 lots go contribute, and it's roughly about $250,000. In this phase, they dropped out the check, check this afternoon for the level.
And where would that light be? I'm sorry, that's.
It's already in, we have Whitman and College.
Whitman and College, okay. You know, if you go back a few years, there were some real concern about the traffic flows through there, and I just wanted to ask you, have you, has there been any comments or concerns or complaints about the Hayden Homes area there and how the traffic flowed out onto Whitman and then heading, I'm guessing that would be east? Not significant?
I would say not significant. Occasionally, we get requests from people that live along Homestead, their complaints about speeding, so we've, we've put out our, we've done the studies on, you know, traffic, the speeds out there. I think you guys have heard about it just as frequently as.
But as far as volume, yeah?
Volume-wise, I mean, there, Robert might want to speak to this, but I, they're.
Nothing.
No, I mean, they've, they've done their part by improving that intersection at College. I mean, that, most of the light and the cost per that infrastructure at that intersection was funded by Hayden Homes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dickerson.
That check amount you just gave us interested me. Could you repeat that? I didn't.
So, there was, during the public comment period initially when we established this subdivision, there was a. subdivision, there was a dollar amount that was established, it was roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then internally, we worked an agreement out with the developer to pay that over, we came up with a per acreage of, it's three thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars per acre that they pay, and that's the development contribution towards that signal, so for every phase it comes, and that includes the entire seventy-one acres, it's not...
So you said they brought in a check for a certain amount, that's what I didn't get?
Eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Oh, I see, okay.
And then we also have a financial guarantee of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the infrastructure that has yet to be installed.
Any other questions for Ms. Kilgore?
I'll move that we approve a resolution number eighteen dash zero zero three.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ricard. Mr. Hartwig, purchase of an SBR blower. I won't even attempt to figure out what SBR stands for.
Sequencing Batch Reactor. So...
What was the first word?
Sequence.
Did you know that?
All right. Yeah.
So we have three blowers, we have the treatment plant for the operating of our process, and, and one of them just gave out the ghost. So we're right now operating on two blowers. The problem what is that if one of those blowers goes down, we can't, our process is dead, and so we'll be discharging, you know, unpleasant water into the stream. So we, this is an emergency, so we did go ahead and order the material, the blower replacement, but we're coming to you behind the DLT approval for the purchases, it's really an emergency that we need to take care of. So we're just asking for authorization to approve purchase of the blower at West Water Treatment Plant not to exceed forty-two thousand.
Ms. Sherman?
So these blowers were put into operation in two thousand and eleven, is seven years or six years of normal light scale?
Do I think so? I don't think so, but there's a long history into this, and...
Like that's too short or too long?
I think it's too short, but it is, it's a long process on, on how we got to this point. We, we ended up with a settlement with blower people, and they, they had two years to, to come out quarterly and check that the deals still haven't been completed, and then all of a sudden this one gave out, so. Warranty just expired.
So the new one's going to last, however?
I would, I would hope, I would hope near fifteen years, but, but you know, obviously we haven't had good luck.
Mr. Peterson?
I'm going to approve the purchase placement core for SBR blower number three for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further questions for Mr. Hartwig? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, and I understand you're up next for Relight Washington. Mr. Rizzatello is in Olympia at our legislative days.
We've talked about this in a few, on a few meetings, and finally, Pacific Core was able to get rates approved and so forth, and, and so they, this basically changes all the streetlights to LEDs, and then the savings is, is, I mean, taken advantage of by the city's rate. But it has to pass through the city, so because the TIB cannot give money to private agencies, so they give it, they'll pass it through to the city. So they reviewed the application and attributed the savings that you saw in your, in your agenda item, so it's a roughly eighty-six thousand dollar job. Full, it has no cost to the city, but the lighting will be better, it's energy efficient, and I think it's good.
Mr. Dickerson?
Somebody asked me the other day if the new streetlights on College Avenue were LEDs or not?
Yes.
I told him I thought so, but I wasn't sure I'd ask. So, so the amount of lights we have to replace are actually that much less?
Well, yeah, as far as the college, taking the College Avenue out.
Yeah.
Well, hold on, let me, now the street, the, the intersection lights, they are not LED, they're a high-pressure sodium, I believe, but we're working at getting those transferred out. Those are our lights, so we have to take care of those.
Oh.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not a cheap fix to get those.
Other questions for Mr. Hartwig?
So why, why do you have this in two different motions?
Two different things?
There's, there's, there's two different contracts involved here.
So we got a contract...
One with TIB and another with Pacific Power.
And it's because of that, because TIB will not fund to private agency.
I'll motion to authorize city administrator to sign Relight Washington, create a new trade.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further questions on motion number one? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And since we can't use the word "and," I'll make a motion for number two. Motion to authorize a city administrator to sign Pacific Power incentive agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further questions from Mr. Hartwig? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. That said, that is the end of...